The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Good evening. We will call to order the August 15th Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We will begin, as always, with a motion to adopt our agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda to be brought up by any of our members? If not, would someone please make said motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
And all in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The agenda has been adopted. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approving the minutes from our regular meeting of July 18th. Once again, if a board member has any changes to our minutes, please let me know. Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to approve, actually. But yes, my mistake. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, please. Motion carries unanimously as well. We have but one public hearing case this evening. In fact, we have but one case, period, this evening. And what we're going to do is just walk you through for a moment the rules for our public hearing. And what we'll have is a presentation from our staff member. After our staff member makes her presentation, we will then hear from the applicant. The applicant will have 10 minutes with which to speak with us. From that point on, we'll open the public hearing. And during the public hearing, if you'd be so kind as to come down that side, hand a card to the clerk that you'll find back there, which will have your name and your other information on it, and stand to your left. There's two podiums there. One has a monitor, one does not. I'd appreciate you standing at the one without the monitor. That also has a little indicator to tell you your timing. That's also very helpful for you. That timer's going to have a green light when you have less than, or when you have more than four and a half or minutes to speak. At the 30 seconds left time period, you will get a amber light, and then when your time is exhausted, that light will shine red. At that point, we will interrupt you fairly quickly to make sure everyone gets the same amount of time. I don't see a large amount of people here, so I won't, I'll skip all the parts about having a representative and not be repetitive or anything like that, and we'll just take our chances from there. So unless anyone has anything to add, we will begin with our first case and our only case, 16 REZ 1-0.
Good evening, Board. For your consideration, is a request to rezone approximately 3.08 acres from Residential 40 to Residential 8 conditional use. The subject property is located south of Casey Brook Court in the Upchurch Farms neighborhood, which I'm highlighting here with the mouse, and, or it's located south of Upchurch Farms, excuse me, and north of Connolly Springs Place, which is in the Park Village subdivision. The site receives access from Davis Drive, so we have Davis Drive over here to the east. And the site has an access easement across this 13-acre piece of property, which is actually town-owned property to currently receive access to the site. It is adjacent to the Davis Drive Elementary and Middle School, and it's adjacent to the White Oak Creek Greenway, which runs along this property here. The property is currently vacant and wooded. The current zoning for the property is Residential 40, as you can see indicated in brown here. The proposed zoning for the property is R8 conditional use, indicated in green with the brown, with the crosshatchings. When the applicant submitted their application and at the time of the Town Council Public Hearing, the conditions that were proposed included limiting the land use to detached dwellings and neighborhood recreation, and limiting the maximum number of lots to nine. Since then, they've added an additional condition, which we will cover later in the presentation. The land use plan designates this site as medium-density residential, which is defined by three to eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant's condition of a maximum of nine lots equals a density of approximately three acres, which is within this range of medium density. According to the Town of Cary GIS maps, the site is not impacted by stream buffers. However, field determination of the features will be determined at the time of development plan review. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities master plan, the White Oak Creek Greenway already is an existing greenway adjacent to the property, just located to the southeast, and it's on property owned by the town. The greenway is indicated in green on the map. As you can see, it runs through the Park Village subdivision, just to the southeast of the property, which is highlighted in yellow, and it has a connection to Davis Drive Elementary and Middle School. The, according to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, the adjacent streets directly adjacent to the site, Casey Brook Court and Connolly Springs Place, are not on the comprehensive plan. This slide, however, shows some nearby thoroughfares, which are in the vicinity of the property. So we have Davis Drive to the east. We have Park Village Drive to the south, running through Park Village. That's a Collector Road, and then Jinks Carpenter Road to the So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the site currently has access from Davis Drive through this town-owned parcel. However, upon development, they wouldn't be able to, to build a road through that parcel. So essentially, they only have two options for connecting to a road, and that is through connecting to either Casey Brook Court to the north, or Connolly Springs Place to the south. There was a neighborhood meeting held on this site in May. There were 18 area residents in attendance. Questions and discussions included the road connections and requirements for connectivity from the adjacent neighborhoods, construction traffic, buffers and tree protection, greenway connection to adjacent schools, access for emergency vehicles. I'll also note that the major concern that was echoed was the connection to both Upchurch Farms to the north, as well as Connolly Springs to the south, and the potential for creating a throughway. So at the Town Council Public Hearing, representatives from Park Village and the Upchurch Farms neighborhoods shared their concerns regarding the connection to both the neighborhood to the north, as well as the neighborhood to the south, noting that this may create a cut through between neighborhoods, which could be particularly bad around school drop-off and pickup times. They also noted that Connolly Springs Place to the south has the appearance of a permanent cul-de-sac, noting that the pavement does not extend to the property line. There's also no signs up saying that there's a future road connection. So just to illustrate what they were referring to at the, at the Town Council Public Hearing, Connolly Springs Place is this road to the south, that ends in what looks like a cul-de-sac. And even though, as you can see, the right-of-way extends to the property line, the pavement stops short of the property line, the curbing goes around the cul-de-sac, giving the appearance of a permanent cul-de-sac. This is just a picture to illustrate what the end of the cul-de-sac looks like. When I went out to post the public hearing sign, I took a picture. And as you can see, the property line's approximately where the fence is located, and the pavement stops short of that. There's also a curve that goes fully around the cul-de-sac. So since the Town Council Public Hearing, the Town of Cary Director of Transportation and Facilities issued a determination noting that connectivity to Connolly Springs Place in the Park Village subdivision would be allowed, but not required. The applicant submitted a new, an additional condition addressing this. This additional condition reads, "There shall be no vehicular connection to Connolly Springs Place. However, this shall not preclude pedestrian, bicycle connections, and utility stubs and connections as required by the Cary Land Development Ordinance." So because of the additional conditions submitted, this meeting tonight is a public hearing. Properties within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the public hearing. There were also signs placed at the site and legal ads on the town's website in accordance with the Town of Cary's Land Development Ordinance. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments. Following the public hearing, staff will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My name is Glenda Stoppin, Associate. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner. Staff has done an excellent job going over everything, so I'm going to repeat a few things, but I do want to go over some of the key points. As staff pointed out, the current zoning is R40. We're proposing R8 conditional use. By condition, the maximum number of lots is nine. And as staff said, this basically puts the density at roughly three units per acre. The land use plan designation for the property is, is medium, so we are at the very, very, very low end of medium. And also, the type of use that would be allowed is single-family detached. At the public hearing, it did appear that the biggest concern that we heard was the connection to the south, as is pointed out, into Park Village. And staff was asked to take a look at the connectivity ordinance to see if, in fact, that connection would or would not be required. And as we all know, that the Director of Transportation and Facilities came back and said it is not a requirement. We did add a zoning condition prohibiting that connection, but, you know, allowing for pedestrian types of connections that, that is allowed or required by the LDO. And in reviewing our condition that we added, staff did request that we broaden the condition to not just say there would not be a connection. Again, just to review the request, we are in compliance with the land use plan. We, we believe that the lot size, the number of lots being proposed, which is a maximum of nine, will blend in very nicely with what is adjacent to the property. The, the expectation are for the lots to be equal in size, and the homes equal in size, if not larger. And again, I know that's not a zoning condition, but we, we do see this development being seamless as it goes into Upchurch Farms. It does meet the requirements of the growth management plan. You know, there is a question, as you see in your staff report, is the proposed use suitable for this location? In our opinion, it is. We feel that, again, with the restriction on the number of lots and the density, that it is a, actually a perfect fit for this location, and we would ask for the Board's support. Thank you. I'm also here, I'm here to answer questions, and also the property owner is here, as is the builder for the site, if you've got any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So our public hearing is now open on this case. Is anyone interested in coming and speaking to us? Uh, yes, we, have someone?
Good evening. My name is James Bernier Jr. I'm a resident in Cary, resident Park Village specifically. I'm also on the Homeowner Association Board for Park Village. I appeared before the Town Council, the public hearing, on behalf of Park Village, the Board, Park Village residents, and on behalf of Upchurch Farms. And as you all have heard this evening so far, it is correct. We oppose, our primary concern was the, in connecting this new development to both Casey Brook and Park Village, it would create a throughway through both Upchurch and, and Park Village. So that, that was a big concern that both Park Village and Upchurch Farms had. And there were numerous speakers, and they all presented material, which I believe has been included in the package that each of you have had. So I don't intend to go over any of that, because it seems that we have now passed that. And we greatly appreciate the owner developer working and adding this new zoning condition that, as I understand, avoid that vehicular connection. I'll take a step forward. It's my current, my, my understanding and Park Village understanding that essentially the cul-de-sac would not be broken. We understand that, as the condition puts for it, that there will be pedestrian connection, and all the people can walk from one area, one development to the other, which we understand. So given that understanding and seeing the, the zoning condition, we wanted to, I wanted to at least let you guys know that, that that satisfies our concern to that extent, and we, we don't oppose the rezoning. And as I said, we greatly appreciate the developer making that change. I've been in contact with Glenda, and I appreciate her being in contact with us and helping us work through that. And I believe that is, so the process and purpose of the system, and we greatly appreciate that. It is my understanding that Upchurch Farms still has concerns about buffer zones between the development and new houses. Upchurch Farms is not here, as far as I understand. I don't represent them in this meeting, but just wanted to mention that. It's my understanding that they continue to discuss that with the developer, to see how that, their concerns can be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for our public hearing?
Hi, my name is Brenda Merrill. I'm a resident of Park Village, and I live on Connolly Springs Place. I also spoke at the previous meeting. I also want to thank you guys for the rezoning stipulations in terms of not putting the street through my street. But I understand that there needs to be a pedestrian walkway. But again, as we talked about at the other meeting, it seems like we're trying to do one-size-fits-all, and we're forgetting something very important here when we talk about that pedestrian walkway. We have a greenway right behind my house. It makes a better solution instead of putting that walkway into the street, dead into the street, is connect that walkway into the greenway. It's already there. That's where the people ride their bikes. That's where the people walk. That's where the people walk with their kids on the stroller. Why put a walkway into the street that's going to cause them to have to go all the way down the street to get to the walkway for pedestrians? So I am asking that. I, I know one thing, it's not one-size-fits-all. We have a better solution to connect it to the walkway. It just makes more sense. If I'm riding my bike, you can't cut through my yard, because if you start cutting through my yard, I'm going to put a fence up. And then there'll be a fence all the way down, and it'll force the people to go all the way down the street, around the corner, to get to the greenway. And I apologize for repeating myself, but it's just very important that we don't get back to trying to make one-size-fits-all. This is a better solution. So thanks again for your time, and I hope that will be considered. I think the, I don't know if the owner left yet or not. I don't see anyone sitting up here. Oh, there you are. Okay. I, I hope you will consider that, because I think that's a much better solution than dumping it to the street. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Flora. I live in the Upchurch Farm. Actually, my backyard is right facing the, the rezoning area. I understand that the Town of Cary wants, you know, make this land available to new residents, and I, you know, agree with that. I hope the Town of Cary, you know, may, can use this land. But when I buy our house, that's our first property. You know, we're very concerned about our privacy, also our neighbors. We all, you know, know that what kind of zone is that. There's going to be, when I asked at that time, they said they are planning to build a church there. So I think, well, that's okay, you know. And there is enough buffer between these two land. And also, because the land is much higher than our backyard, so if it's like immediately connect to each other, make us, you know, people will look right down into the backyard and the, the house. So I, our big concern, really help the Town of Cary can help us, you know, make this condition, make this buffer available when this land rezoning. And also for the, when the construction, there's a lot of small kids in the neighborhood, so is that possible? There is another way the construction vehicle can, you know, go into that land instead of pass the Upchurch Farm land. That's a long road, and it's very busy. And the kids, school buses, all will stop there. That's all I concern, and I, you know, really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this public hearing?
I'm Suresh Jawahar. I, my property is right on the backyard of the rezoning. We have few things. I think we did send it to the, the Glenda, I believe, the builders, yeah. So I just want to bring it to this public forum, making sure those points are here to the team. One is, like I think what, what has been mentioned, if we can have the, you know, the traffic, the construction traffic routed through the Davis Drive double, double road there, there is one, instead of going through the Upchurch. We would really appreciate it. Because in the past, we have seen when the Upchurch Farms coming along, there's a lot of theft and things like that. You know, again, this is more established Upchurch Farms, so we just want to make sure, you know, those things doesn't repeat again. You know, so if we could consider that, we would really appreciate that. And the other one is, same, the buffer zone. I guess we haven't got any clear indication on what's the buffer zone, because every time we asked Town of Cary, we got a different answer. I think Upchurch Farms left 15 feet from our property. There is a 15-foot buffer. So we would like them to consider the same if they can leave 15 feet. Again, they're building a little higher-end community too, so we just want to make sure, you know, that will give them an ample privacy on their side too. So those are the two points I'd like to bring into this team. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to us? I see no one standing or giving me any, any indication, so we'll close the public hearing. We're now open for questions of our staff and of the applicant. Before the questions come about, I'd just like to mention that the connectivity, which the sidewalk actually is part of the connectivity, is beyond the scope of what we can do. But that doesn't mean it's not still in place. So there's still times to talk to that. So for the folks who have that concern, that's, that's not the kind of thing we'll be, we'll be adjudicating today. And same thing with construction traffic. There, there's avenues with which that can be addressed. Unfortunately, this, this board meeting is not one of them. So with that, with that in mind, we will talk about and ask questions about the things we can control, and I'm sure someone's going to ask about buffers now.
Actually, I do have a question for staff regarding buffers.
Go ahead.
Just some help and clarification on, in the staff report, I'm seeing that Section A, or the piece that's adjacent to Park Village, is a 30-foot Type B buffer. However, Section C, or the portion adjacent to Upchurch Farm, is a 20-foot combined landscape area planted to Type B standards. I just want to, some help in understanding what, what's driving that difference, and also what the difference between a Type B buffer and a combined landscape area planted to Type B standards is.
Okay. Excellent question. So buffers are officially determined at the time of development plan review. However, we go ahead and give a, a look at what the anticipated buffers would be at the time of the rezoning. And there is a table of that, as you alluded to in the staff report. Because there are so many sections of corners associated with this particular future property, what we had to do is look at each segment of property and what the adjoining land use is. And that will tell you what type of buffer is required. So I'll start with Upchurch Farms, which is the segment C here. And as you can see, there's a note saying that there is already a 15-foot Type B buffer easement recorded on the perimeter lots of the Upchurch Farm subdivision. The easement is located within the platted portions of the lot. So looking at the land use, at the, the land use of the, of the neighborhood to the north determines what the buffer will be for the subject property. So for this one, because we are abutting, because the subject property is abutting 8,000 square foot or higher lots, a 20-foot combined landscape area planted to Type B, or planted to Type B standards is required. And what that means is 20-foot combined means 20-foot total. So there could be potentially 10-foot on one side, 10-foot on the other side of the property line to make up the total buffer area. And it's called a landscape area because it can be within the platted portion of the lot and doesn't have to be reserved as like a strip of open space that's owned by the Homeowners Association. So that's a scenario for abutting Upchurch Farms to the north. Park Village, which is to the west, and then also to the south, the lot sizes, the minimum lot size for that neighborhood is smaller than Upchurch Farms, which means there is a more intensive buffer required. So the minimum lot size for Park Village is 7,000 square feet, which means because of that, 30-foot, 30-foot combined Type B buffer is required. And again, this can be combined with whatever buffer is already in place at Park Village. And as you can see on this image here, there's a tiny strip of open space that's, or buffer space that's platted along the backs of each of the properties here in Park Village. So they already have a 15-foot recorded open space strip along the perimeter lots in Park Village. So this plus 15 feet would be the requirement for the 30-foot Type B buffer adjacent to Park Village. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
And this was, this graphic was very helpful. Thank you for putting it together. It was a little hard to track exactly which, what we were.
So quick follow-up question I want to make. So on the, on C, where it's, it's abutting to Upchurch Farms, there's already existing 15-foot Type B buffer, and the requirement's a 20-foot combined. So is that 15 plus only five more in the new development, or is that?
Potentially. It'll officially be evaluated at the time of plan review. But yeah, officially, you're supposed, you're supposed to have 20 feet.
Total.
And if there is officially 15 feet on one side, it could be that there, there may be only five foot required for the subject property. But we'll have to officially evaluate that at the time of site plan.
That's it. Because, okay, I just want to clarify. So way it is here, I understand, I mean, that in the new development, they could simply have a five-foot buffer and meet that minimum 20 foot. Okay. I just want, I was out at that site on Sunday, and I appreciate the comment about the elevation change is that this is uphill, the new development is uphill, and we'll be looking down just on that, on that, on those five backyards that are joint. on that, on those five backyards that are joint.
We went a lot bigger than the five. We put 20 feet in.
We're going to, we can't get into an exchange like this, I'm afraid to say. If the applicant, Glenda, if you want to come down and speak to it, that's fine, but...
Staff is correct in terms of, if you look at, and by the way, you do an excellent job with those charts. I actually like it very much. She is correct, with the total of 20, theoretically, you could only have five feet. On the layout that we've done, we have, and again, it's not a zoning condition, but as staff pointed out, the actual width will be looked at at site plan. Depending upon the vegetation in terms of what's adjacent to it, there may be a requirement for us, whatever the width may be, for us to increase the plant material along our side. But given the topography and what is envisioned on our side and the type of lots, we are considering greater than a five feet. And oftentimes, when staff looks at it, not that they would do it here, but they typically want to see more than five feet anyway. However, whatever is provided, because the lots are of similar size, just as it is in Upchurch Farms, it will be a landscape strip on the lot. And that is, as she pointed out, because it's like to like. Does that help?
That helps, from my understanding. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have we any other questions? Or applicant, or staff?
I do have a small, minor question. So that driveway that used to go from the property out to Davis Drive is going to not be used anymore, because there is a greenway there where a lot of kids go off to school on?
Yes, that's correct. I actually have a slide to address that. Yeah, so the slide that I just pulled up shows the subject property over here on the west, and they currently have this access easement that runs through town property out to Davis Drive. However, there's deed restrictions on this property owned by the town where the access easement runs through, indicating that the property can only be used for open space. And this is as long as there is the school to the north. And also, there's a deed restriction that prohibits the building of a road through this property. So that's not an option for the site to build a road through that site.
So the driveway will go away when this other area gets developed?
I believe so, yeah.
So as follow-up on that, then the existing, that other parcel with the existing home is, their connectivity will be through the new connection to Upchurch?
Yes, that's correct. Here's, I just pulled up a different slide, as you can see this existing home that you were referring to is right here.
Any other questions? Someone care to make a motion one way or the other, then?
I'll make a motion as soon as I find the number. I move that the Board forward case number 16, REZ 10, is that the number?
Yeah.
To Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Is there a second?
No second.
Lead us off, please, if you will, Carla.
So I, you know, I'm really glad that it wasn't our job to decide what tier the neighborhood to the south was, and I'm really glad that that got resolved to everyone's satisfaction. And I hear the concerns that everyone's put forth, the construction traffic, which is, as Mark said, that's really not anything that we have any control over. You know, hopefully something can be worked out, but we wouldn't know. The buffers, you know, typically between two similar subdivisions, it's going to be very minimal, but I would say, you know, the only option is to continue to work with the developer and look for some additional help there in terms of buffer. The, you know, the change in grade is going to be, make that difficult to really get around. And the narrowness of these pieces, they have to fit a road in there in the home, so I don't know how that's going to resolve. But in general, this is the type of use that we'll look for in this property, and, you know, all the logistics seem to have been worked out, so I think it's a good fit.
Thank you. Anything else?
Carla's done an excellent job. The only thing I think I would add to this is that in terms of the buffer situation, it seems to me that there's going to be a workaround for the Upchurch Farms side of it. The detached dwelling, virtually, nobody's here representing the homeowner there, so they must be happy with the B buffers. It doesn't seem to impact that many of the Park Village parcels at all, other than the one on the east of the cul-de-sac. So meets the Land Development Ordinance, appropriate zoning. I do hear the woman's desire to make this greenway pedestrian connection a little more commonsensical, and maybe we can find a way to do that.
Anyone else like to add anything?
I know there was a concern that this is an area where the schools are already overcrowded, but given the fact that we now might have a safer way for the Upchurch children to get to those schools, I think kind of outweighs that. So I hope that that worked out with the greenway issue, that this becomes a safe place for the children to use that area.
You know, I'll support the, what's been submitted, but I just do want to echo the, on that C, that back buffer, you know, hearing, hearing the residents there and anything can be done to make that as robust as possible. And looking from literally the 10,000-foot view here of that lot, it seems as though hopefully the town staff can be creative within that right of way. It looks like there's an area that we could get 20 feet to put a greenway connection, hopefully. That may be wishful thinking, but that'd be nice to see, instead of connecting to that cul-de-sac, as was mentioned.
Anything else? The only thing I'll mention is having seen the discussion that came with the previous hearing, when the possibility that there would still be two-way connectivity. When you look at that, had there been two-way connectivity, it would have been a real snakey maze to get a throughway through there. And I just wonder, how crazy does Davis Drive have to be for that to be a viable alternative? And yet, it still would have been for so many people. And like many people in this room, I'm relieved that it's not going to have two-way connectivity, but wow, if that's something folks would opt for, then we might need to take another look at what's causing that backup to begin with, because that was just, just caught my attention, that someone would even think that might be a more advantageous route. But it's off the table now. So, anyone else have anything? If not, all those in favor of approving this, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. That motion carries unanimously. Without any other business, that is the bulk of our agenda, so...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Can I second that?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, good evening.
Visit the Town of Kiri's website, latownofkiri.org.